Good afternoon, and thank you all for attendance today's Municipal Court Week Celebration. And we're honored to have Judge Kristner here and also our Executive Director of Communication. She will be reading the proclamation, so we are really excited to have you, Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas since 1882, the Municipal Court of Record of the City of Colleen has been a time-honored and vital part of our local government. And whereas municipal courts have more direct contact with the public than all other Texas courts combined, so they are largely responsible for the public impression of the entire Texas judicial system. And whereas this week we recognize municipal judges and court support personnel, and we thank them for their pledge to be ever mindful of neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all and conforming to the standards set by the Canons of Judicial Conduct. And whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities as the local justice center for the adjudication of traffic offenses and the enforcement of local ordinances and fine-only state offenses to protect the peace, dignity, and safety of our community. And whereas municipal court judges and clerks continually strive to improve the administration of justice through participation of judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas the City of Colleen joins in celebrating the accomplishments of the Municipal Court of Record and those of more than 900 Texas municipal courts to salute their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting quality of life, and deterring future criminal behavior. Now therefore, Debbie Nash King, by virtue of the authority vested in her as Mayor of the City of Colleen, does hereby proclaim November 6 through November 10, 2023 Municipal Court Week, and call upon citizens to recognize the important, honorable, and vital work of court professionals and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent." Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
(applause)
(audio cuts out)
Madam Mayor, on behalf of all of us, the Cleveland Municipal Court, I want to thank you for this proclamation. We strive very hard every day to provide impartiality and fairness to everyone who comes into the court. We try to do it as efficiently as possible. And once again, we thank you for this proclamation, Madam Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming to tonight's council meeting. We will start with our citizen petitions. Madam Secretary.
CP-23-030, Shawn Price, "Citizen's Responsibility to Etiquette Within Chambers and Those of Council Members With Respect to Unprofessionalism by Council."
Thank you, sir. You have four minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This petition is in response to witnessing the events of citizens speaking at the podium before you. I've seen altercations and stuff like this, so it's about perceptions that are received by myself as a citizen. And it drew me to make this position and come forward and say, and correlate a few things about etiquette and/or citizens' etiquette, how we should present ourselves, right? Not to pontificate or preach to anybody for anything or anything like that. Common decency is required, right? If we give you due just and respect, we should have that reciprocated back to us. However, and which would, that's the etiquette, right, that we should all strive to ascertain in any conversations that we have, because it creates barriers to communicate effectively, right? And the unprofessionalism, when you look down upon your glasses at somebody, when you make a facial expressions, or you ignore, or when you have sidebar conversations while somebody's speaking up here, that's a sign of disrespect, and that can be reciprocated, but then it's an attack. But it should be, you shouldn't fail to understand and attain that your actions can be met equally, right? So if you're angry, whoever's speaking out here is going to get angry, vice versa. If I come up angry, I'm going to make you angry, and then we're not going to get anything communicated. So, but there's a couple of things here that I want to bring about. When we come up to speak, I see that we're just gavelled off. You're not on topic. That's not in the agenda. So we just totally disregard the First Amendment? According to state law, we have a right to speak on topic or off topic. However, it may not be addressed if we're not on topic. But this shouldn't be gavelled off, and you're told or threatened to be arrested and taken out of here if we don't stay to a topic. But every citizen has a right to readdress, however that might be. They get their four minutes, and as long as they approach this podium and you respectfully, they should be able to say whatever they want in their four minutes, not just gavelled off, "You're not on topic, get out of here." That's a form of disrespect and discontentment towards the citizenry. So, if you look at the Texas State Law 551.007, Section C, Part E, it states all of this. You can read all of it if you want to. I'm sure you have. You're on the city council, and you're the mayor. So, but not only that, our procedures of addressing something isn't just before it happens. Physically states before or during we can approach and ask to be heard. Before or during the body's consideration of an item, we're allowed to address. There's not a specific time, and that's in the state law. So it asks that the procedures be coherent and in writing, which they're not, so that if we come up here to talk, we can talk respectively in understanding what our limitations are as a citizen, so we're not coming head-to-head, butting heads with you. And with that, thank you for your time.
Madam Secretary, presentations.
PR-23-023, "Presentation Regarding the Central Texas Volunteers Program."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Ford.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager and Council. I just wanted to set up Ms. Vega before she comes and speaks, but the mayor first was introduced to this program in a meeting with the KISD superintendent, because Ms. Vega's program is already being utilized within KISD, and Ms. Vega has also taken it upon herself to already put our City of Colleen volunteer activities on her website. So, colinetexas.gov/volunteer has several departments who have volunteers that we're requesting, and she is making that open to not only students but community members. So it's a one-stop shop for everybody to volunteer, and I just wanted to set her up with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Ford, good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. I have with me, I'm Marlo Vega, I'm the Director of the Program, and I have Renee Hamm, who is the co-director of the program, and Eliza Duran, who is one of our volunteers as well. But I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and City Council, for the invitation to introduce to you a remarkable initiative that has emerged in our city, the Central Station Volunteers, better known as the CSV Program. This program highlights the transformative power of volunteering. In partnership with the Colleen ISD, various businesses and community organizations, a passionate group of Christian citizens establish a dynamic center for community enrichment. This initiative encompasses a helpful resource, offering a one-stop shop for students and our citizens, complete with a resourceful database of events, scholarship information, apprenticeships, internships, and fun classes hosted by expert volunteers in their field. Our dedicated staff understands the challenge of finding opportunities to apply talents and skills, build valuable networks, and expand knowledge beyond traditional education. Our mission strives to be inspirational. We empower individuals to explore their passions, make informed decisions, and nurture personal growth. We are supported by an extensive network of community partners, all providing participants with valuable resources and opportunities. At the core of our endeavor is the act of volunteering, which offers not only a means to give back, but a lifeline that can alleviate mental and physical health issues our citizens may be facing. Volunteering is a pathway to self-discovery and empowerment, enabling individuals to find purpose, create meaningful change, and contribute to a better world. However, the CSV Program is not just a volunteer initiative. It serves as an essential arm of the city's outreach efforts as well. We work to bring families and friends together for good causes. This dynamic program plays a pivotal role in enhancing the community and can have a profound impact on the City of Colleen. Volunteering has the power to make light work, uplift citizens, evoke changes in people, and bring people together to engage and network in each other. In Leviticus 19:18, verse 18, it states, "Love your neighbor as you love yourself." So we will work to serve and embrace each other. How can we serve the city and partner with you? We can help in strengthening community bonds. We serve as a unifying force, bringing together residents of diverse backgrounds, schools, organizations, et cetera. We can help develop the youth. We provide valuable hands-on learning experiences, but also a sense of civic responsibility from a young age, helping them excel academically and build strong foundations in their future. We also like to address community needs. Volunteers work on projects that directly benefit the city, such as beautification initiatives, food drive, support senior citizens, and help to ensure their vulnerable populations have access and avoid isolation. This active involvement helps improve the quality of life for everyone. We also help to alleviate mental health challenges. Meaningful activities reduce stress, anxiety, and depression in people. Mental health issues are on the rise post-pandemic, now recognized in our student populations as well. We enhance endorphins and release dopamine in our bodies when stimulated by positive interactions with others, as stated in a study published by the Mayo Clinic. We also help to foster personal growth. Individuals explore their passions and make informed choices, leading to personal growth and development. The CSV Program aims to become an invaluable asset for the city's outreach efforts. I hope that we've made an inspiring call to action by not only inviting all residents and leaders of our city to join hands and make a positive impact on our communities, but also encouraging businesses, schools, churches, hospitals, and local organizations and clubs to embrace our volunteers. They can help by creating events, apprenticeship opportunities, internships, offering classes for our volunteers to select to participate in in the future. We appreciate you giving us a voice to announce the emergence of our CSV Program, and would like to spread the word throughout the city to partner with us. I also have our volunteer here who would like to say a word about her experience.
Hi, my name is Eliza Duran, and I'm a senior at Harker Heights High School. I've been with CSV since the start, which is this summer. While volunteering at CSV, I have acquired skills in the area of data entry, becoming more effective communicator, and learning the importance of volunteering in the community. CSV has improved my social and networking skills with all of the new skills that I can learn to pursue a career in business and marketing. Volunteering makes me happy because I know I'm in a good part of a, I know that I'm in a good organization that is driven to help the young population in Colleen and Harker Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. And Council, the reason I wanted us to hear from Central Station Volunteers is that a lot of beautification projects that I'm hoping the Council, we can work together per district as a city, and we can take a day to beautify the City of Colleen. By bringing each district, you be responsible for your district, and the at-large will work with me in just trying to rally volunteers on a day that we agree to set aside. And we also need volunteers when we have more community events. I think that is very important. So this is just an avenue to recruit more volunteers to assist with the City of Colleen, and even if you have a specific project in your district, we can utilize these services which are free. All right. Mr. Cameron Cock. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My comments are directed to CP-23-30. A month does not go by that a resident of Colleen attends these monthly meetings at the council and asks permission or asks requests to discuss matters with you that you currently and do ignore them. You have to understand, you are the elected officials that we put you in place, and in most instances, I personally witnessed you ignoring them and ignoring the advice they're trying to give you. In my opinion, it's obvious that two-way communication in this council is broken, even if matters are urgent and need to be discussed. That's why these chambers are having issues with basic etiquette. For example, several months ago, I personally visited this chamber and asked the council to look at water restrictions and take this matter seriously based on the ever-growing number of vehicle wash stations. They went from 35 to 44 since I last spoke to you. The council did have a formal presentation from the Executive Director of Public Works. In his slideshow, it was pointed out that he only visited a few, a small fraction, of the 44 wash stations and inspected them to see if they were in compliance. The inspector did notice several problems with those washing stations, as they did not formally comply with the written guidance and should have been ticketed but weren't. During his presentation, as well as the legal department, gave the city council three options to remedy the problem of non-compliance in the water restrictions. One was to do nothing by the council. Two was to implement a new policy to fix the existing areas of concern. Three was to place a 90-day temporary hold on new businesses within the seven-mile radius of the city limits. At that time and contingencies to today, the city council has decided to ignore this problem and do nothing. In my neighborhood alone, three more signs have been erected of new car wash stations coming. Forty-four is not the max, it's just even growing higher. Let's talk about another fact, the unprofessionalism of the city council. It's strange that some topics are ignored even though they're in the public view. For example, the Colleen Housing Authority. When will the Colleen Housing Authority discussion be added to the city council agenda to try to identify the problems and what occurred? Does the city mayor, the city manager, or anyone in the city council take responsibility for the current crisis? Probably not, because it will not be discussed. Reference PR-23-23, I have two questions. This topic spoke about volunteerism. I personally would like each council member to verbally explain which volunteer nonprofit program or service, as a board member, they volunteered at within the last month, and how many hours they volunteered at that organization. There are other nonprofit volunteer organizations besides the Central Texas Volunteer Program. Will other nonprofits, such as the Colleen Volunteers Incorporated, be discussed here? That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Forino. Michael Forino. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
While we're on the topic of unprofessional behavior and conduct, not so long ago, the city manager himself tried to personally malign me with details and information about his background up in Duncanville, and to tie a bridge with regard to his continuing pattern of unprofessionalism, et cetera, et cetera. At 4:30 this afternoon, before this meeting commenced, I sent every elected member and the city secretary an email. Mr. Kegel took issue with the fact that I cited a blogger who was locked up for a heinous crime, which I was not aware of but didn't care about, and then he tried to tie me to that individual. In that email, you will find verified documentation of the actual court document from the Dallas County Court system. So that lawsuit actually did happen. So in all the time that he was trying to malign my integrity and my credibility, an audience member could be heard off to the side, "Yeah, but did it happen? Did it happen?" It absolutely did happen. Again, the City of Leander fired this gentleman for cause. You folks saw fit to hire him. On the city's propaganda, as part of what's, I printed this out, "Citizen Engagement: Several Issues." We're still waiting on a meeting about that, the Fourth Amendment. I engaged or attempted to engage yesterday with a council member. "Oh, I gotta go, I gotta get someplace else." It is amazing that we get four minutes to talk about things up here. We get the platitudes for the cameras and the press that say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll get all over that," and then nothing ever happens. A nice little meeting room over there, we can go into closed session, and we can discuss the very fine details. Continuous improvement, I don't know of what. Fairness, hardly. First-rate customer service? I tried to engage the city manager directly, and he comes up in an official email with false allegations that I made threats against his family. Fiscal discipline and accountability? Any one of us can poke a hundred holes in that after the budget hearings, especially with the shortfalls in budget of his own office salaries. Highest ethical behavior? His remarks in trying to malign me in this public chamber? Again, you can have your own opinions, but you can't have your own facts. Your emails detail also the forensic audit that Duncanville conducted, and has our city manager's name all over it, complete with canceled checks. It's in there. I know that you folks have a habit of not responding to emails, not responding to telephone calls, but this is all information that is verified, it has legal record, and it needs to be addressed. This meeting with the city manager, highest ethical behavior, we already did that, transparent communications? No, we're not getting that. At least, I'm not. This is three times in a row, I present serious allegations backed up by fact, not opinion, not bloviations, nothing like that. I present it, and you all turn into astronomers, you look at the ceiling, let's move on to the next issue, and then you wonder why, me especially, I get angry? I have been nearly physically attacked by someone from up here. I have been yelled at immediately, in public, went right to it from one of your members, didn't escalate to that. He chose to immediately start calling me names and questioning my mental health as a combat veteran, et cetera, et cetera, but then whenever possible, when there's a proclamation or a camera. I love the veterans. Okay. So, I would like, at some point after the meeting, I want to get an exact time and date where we can address these issues. And the city manager might be well to consider the fact that Ms. Deborah Carlson, we've been in contact with her. So we have, we have the facts, and we have, again, it's in your emails, I welcome you, I challenge you to take a look at it. These are facts that are not in dispute. So this man has a record that needs to be looked at.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. First of all, I want to apologize, I had dental procedure earlier, my, part of my face is still numb, my voice could possibly sound kind of strange. I apologize. With respect to professionalism, I want to give credit to our mayor for doing something very simple last time at our council meeting. Madam Mayor, you asked a very simple question. It was very meaningful to me. You asked, "Did the staff break the law?" And that was brought about by the illegal warrant. That simple question by you, Madam Mayor, tells me that you do care about laws, about laws being followed, and I want you to know that I appreciate that very much. Thank you for asking that question. Regarding professionalism and laws being followed, Madam Mayor, do you think the city's staff should be held accountable if they give false information to police or the judge? I have evidence that that has happened on repeated occasions. So again, I ask you, Madam Mayor, does the city of Colleen staff, should they be held accountable if they give false information to police or the judge? Also, yesterday, I talked to Deborah Carlson on the phone, Mr. Kegel, and it turns out that Mr. Forino is actually correct. I'm bringing that up.
What are we talking about?
Professionalism.
And this professionalism, if you go on by number one, the citizen responsibilities. Okay, you're on the council chambers.
Well, it's regarding, yeah.
Etiquette? You can stop her time, please. I'm just going on with CP-23-30.
Yeah, it's regarding professionalism.
The only person you can attack is the council, because Mr. Kegel is not a council member. So you can go at me and keep on attacking us. That's, you can do that.
I understand. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. I appreciate it for explaining. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Mayor, so yesterday, I talked on the phone with a person who won a lawsuit against the City of Duncanville, and I'm bringing that up because the person who allowed these violations to happen and ignored complaints is doing the same thing here. So I think it is very relevant.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna go back to Mr. Kegel.
Yes.
If anybody can be attacked, it's me and the council.
Well, I.
According to number one.
I understand.
So his name, he's out of it. If that's something I want to.
I didn't say the name.
Okay. Well, okay.
Okay. There was a lawsuit in the City of Duncanville, and it was won because laws were disregarded. And that's relevant here, because federal laws and state laws are disregarded here. And in addition to that, police have been lied to. The judge has been lied to. I have evidence, and I think I would like for you to respond to my question, and I just brought that up, the, what happened in Duncanville, I just brought it up as an additional information, because I think it is relevant. It's regarding following laws. And again, I really appreciate you asking about staff, you know, following laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you too, Ms. Alco. Melissa Bryan.
Mayor, it sounds like you're not feeling well. I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off with the Safer Streets for All Grant. I think that, first of all, I want to say I support it again. I know that, it was mentioned, it's important to have as many citizens' comments as possible come up in support of it, so that each one gets counted and helps us to have a better opportunity to be awarded that grant. I noticed that on the agenda, though, there is zero information about what it is. So citizens who might be interested don't have the ability to look at the agenda and the packet and decide whether they're in favor or opposed to the SS4A grant. My request and recommendation would be maybe adding a little bit of information about Also, I would like to say that this is one night where the mayor and I completely agree on something, and that is, we do need to have a dedicated warming center that is one location that is accessible to everyone, that everyone who's out on the streets knows they can go to that one place if it's freezing. Where we disagree is that the city should be operating it. That puts the city responsible for maintaining, sanitizing, cleaning. The insurance for liability in case there's, you actually have to have liability for disease, you have to have liability for injuries, you have to have liability for the workers' compensation. There is a lot that goes into it that the city would cover, especially if it's in our own location. We have, for the past year and a half... We have, for the past year and a half, partnered with Moss Bros. Community Center in order to have a warming and cooling center. I know that at the moment, they are closed due to an insurance issue. And to answer a question from a commenter earlier, the city council members have absolutely nothing to do with Colleen Housing Authority. And so I do want to stand up for the city council members and acknowledge that I don't hold any of you responsible for what's going on. The only person who's an elected official in the city who has anything to do with it would be the mayor, and that is in appointing and removing board members. I don't know all of the background. I don't know what anyone knew at any point in time. The only thing that could be done is to manage the board members who are appointed to it by the mayor or the mayors and to determine at that point what happens. If someone isn't doing proper oversight, they could be removed. Just like if a council member, excuse me, isn't providing proper oversight, they can be recalled. It's a simple recall by the mayor by a letter that she writes with 10-day notice. That would probably include any board members who are hostile towards citizens or people attending their meetings, who insult not just the one person that they have a personal problem with, but other members of the audience as well, who insult national organizations. That is not a way to run a board and that person is selected purely by the mayor and is causing disruption. In defense of the immediate prior speaker, where it comes to respect and her discretion that she was trying to have, I will bring that back around to the city council and elected officials then because the city council members did not call a point of order and the mayor allowed the city manager to continue speaking in a disparaging manner towards a citizen at the last meeting two weeks ago. That's how we tie that back to respect from the city council is also managing what goes up on that dais, not just you, but the rules say that the city council governs each other. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sean Price. Mr. Sean Price, you signed up to speak on item number 6, 9, 10, 11, and 16.
I misunderstood the secretary when she said I got one more. But this one, so I apologize. I'm still getting the hang of speaking up here. Again, good evening, Mayor, and hopefully you're not infectious. City council, again. Yeah, so item 6, 23-181, 182, as it were. My question is, why are we paying for the crossing when it's BNS, when it's the railroad? Don't, aren't they responsible for their tracks? Or is it co-share on paying for all these crossovers? So that's why I'm like, I don't understand how we're paying for the railroad crossing when it's the railroad's property and that's a private business. So I'm a little confused with that. If I can get an explanation of how that money is spent and why we're paying for a private entity's railroad's crossing. Number 9, 23-185, is, what are the construction items are we actually buying to put and install? Number 10, 23-186, do we not use a GSA product catalog? Or do we always go on the civilian, civilian sector for these items? I thought there was a GSA catalog to purchase all of this stuff for fleet vehicles within government entities. So I was just wondering, you know, what that is. And then on number 11, 23-187, is what is exactly going to be provided to us for these services? What are we gonna exact, what are we gonna get? And that's it. Are we getting buses? Are we getting, I don't know, scooters or what? Because there's a lot of different devices now that are being out there. You know, these little scooters and stuff like this, these electronic bikes and so forth. So what exactly are we being given? And what that, that's it for.
You have number 16.
Oh, yeah, well, I thought that was on the public hearing. But yeah, on that one was, what company is actually giving, providing the care? Or is that through a state, state systems there? So the warming center policy? So we're gonna have a policy, but who's gonna actually be providing the warming stations? That was my question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do any council members have any comments to make? Because I do. Okay, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To answer the question that was just asked by the citizen relating to RS-23-182, according to the memorandum and legislative text it reads, in order to proceed with the improvements for the railroad crossing, the city is required to enter into an agreement with BNSF. The agreement states the requirements to our contract for construction near the tracks and coordination needed for the improvements within the BNSF right-of-way. In accordance with the standard BNSF con agreement, the city is responsible for 80% of the total cost. That's based on a standard agreement that's already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. And I was gonna ask council, I'm glad you did that, asked staff to go in detail. And they hadn't given their presentation, but thank you for answering that question. Mayor Prota.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and our constituents. We are a team. The city council that you sit and see every given day, when we come in and we talk and with our staff, we do the best to follow every recommendation and things that we have to do. I don't take it pretty fun when you come and pick at anyone on my team. On our team, we work hard. We work hard together and we get the job done. May not be the way that you want it done, but the job gets done.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. There was a question that was asked regarding the wash stations. And just to refresh my memory, I recall that the constituent did come up and ask about the car washes and such. And that we then took that initiative to have our public works director go out and do some research for us, which in turn he did. And then, if my memory serves me correct, the advice was to begin to work on ordinance for the future, for the next cycle. Is that not, is that not what we discussed and decided at that time? If we recall?
No, there was no direction there. But there's a, I believe at the next meeting, there's a council request.
It was put on so we can discuss it. That was what, my understanding. Thank you very much. So I just want to clear up that was not that we did nothing, that we did hear our constituent. We asked for some research and for some data and then we brought it back for discussion. So I hope that you're here for that, sir, and we hope to continue that conversation. Regarding the evidence of higher level of possible fraud or something that was implied here earlier by constituent, was information provided to our constituent as to what they can do with regards to if they felt there was some, some level of impropriety on a case that was already closed as far as what they can do to take it a step further? Have we discussed that as information was provided to that constituent? Thank you. We'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, what was your question?
Information of impropriety was mentioned here, that council.
I think that was Colleen Housing Authority.
No, ma'am, that was with regards to the pet, evidence of higher level of impropriety and misinformation that was provided. My understanding at our last meeting is that we discussed that. We said that case was closed. There was no level of impropriety with regards to that animal situation and that that constituent was provided additional information for her own research. Is that, is that correct?
I believe they were providing information. They just reject it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. I didn't hear your question. Councilmember Segar.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask our attorney here because I think there was a question brought up about procedure. When citizens bring things and they're out of agenda items and when you're speak, I think they're, it's important that they understand that there is policy in place that we have to follow. And anything we do up here, you know, when I got here right now, they said there was a shortage of council members. And I kind of kid around, I said, well, we can have a meeting with three as long as we don't vote. But the person that we, as council member, turn to is our attorney. And she knows the rules and stuff like that. So there is a reason why we can't just go off and talk on anything we want to. You know, we have to get the agenda a certain amount of time. And I just want to make sure that we're following what we're supposed to do and making sure that our citizens are educated on that. Because I know that a lot of times you go out there and I'll sit out here and I'm seeing, hearing this information that is inaccurate. And so if someone, can you explain that real quick?
I can respond to that. There is, I did hear today that someone say that citizens have a right to speak on any topic at a council meeting and that is not true. There is no right constitutional otherwise for anyone to get up and speak on any topic in any manner that they want to. There is, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, a right to speak before an item that is on the agenda. The city of Colleen also has, so that's citizen comments. That's where anybody has, has a right to speak on any topic on the agenda. And that's the right they have under the Open Meetings Act. The city of Colleen also has a petition which allows the, and we have a written process for a citizen to come in and request to put a topic on an agenda on a matter related to city business. And we have that. That is not a constitutional right or a right otherwise provided by law. That is something the city of Colleen does. So I did, thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify. There's no overall right for any citizen to speak on any topic at a council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? I just want to address two topics really quick. And the first one is the Central Station Volunteers. This is a free organization. We found out about it through our partnership with KISD. They're not charging us anything. That's just an avenue to any other nonprofit organization that want to put out our information to the citizen. We use CTC, we use Texas A&amp;M, met with the president. Anyone that's willing to put out the events that's going on in the city of Colleen, we're gonna utilize them. And as far as KVI, KVI came to us, I think, two or three years ago. I'm not sure how many years ago and decided to pull away from the city of Colleen because they wanted to be a standalone. So therefore, to us, it's just like the Colleen Housing Authority. It's a standalone. And even though I do appoint board members to the Colleen Housing Authority, I haven't seen anything. It's just personalities. That's what I've come to the conclusion. It was personalities with the past board, the board before that. So only thing, I want the board to know, the Colleen Housing Authority, that they have done an extraordinary job with the, in the situation that they're currently in. But the city of Colleen has zero to do with the Colleen Housing Authority. I have one purpose, serving on the Central Texas Council of Government as a board member for the city, but also as a representative on the state level for the whole Belle County. Two things. One, that the residents, their vouchers will be paid and they will not have to be worried about being evicted. And two, that small business owners, which are landlords, that they can continue to pay their mortgage. And once I appoint a board, my hands are off. And whatever's going on at Colleen Housing Authority, that is the board totally responsibility because my job was completed. Those are my two tasks. And I would not interfere with that. That's why you would not see me attending meetings because the residents are taken care of and the landlords are taken care of. So those are the two things that I was assigned to do. So with that being said, any other council member? All right, Madam Secretary.
Discuss items for regular city council meeting on November 14, 2023. Minutes, MN 23-026. Consider minutes of regular city council meeting of October 17, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Resolutions.
Madam Mayor, I have one more set of minutes.
You do? Okay.
Apologize. MN 23-027. Consider minutes of regular city council meeting of October 24, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let the record show all council members are here, except Councilmember Aberes and also Councilmember Adams. Okay, they were supposed to zoom in, but they're not. All right, Madam Secretary, resolutions. Council, you have two times to speak each for five minutes.
RS 23-181. Consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2403, Gilmer Street Road and pedestrian improvements to TTG Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $4,400,004.
Good evening, Mr. Rebell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. This is a bid award associated with Gilmer Road Street Reconstruction Project, one of several to come, right? As you're aware, this is a part of the 2022 Capital Improvement Plan. This project involves the full roadway replacement and sidewalk curb and gutter, as well as lightning, lightning and street trees and also some drainage. The full length of the project, as you recall, is from Veterans Memorial to Ransier. The bids were open on September 21st. These were the bids that were received, 4.45 and about $4 million. As we said, the project limits goes from Veteran Memorial Boulevard to Ransier Avenue. Council has two alternatives to consider and staff is recommending that on next week, the council approve the bid award to TTG Utilities Incorporated for $4,400,004 that will allow this roadway reconstruction project to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. Madam Secretary.
RS 23-182. Consider a memorandum resolution to enter into an agreement with BNSF for the Gilmer Street Railroad Crossing Reconstruction in the amount of $724,151.
Mr. Rebell?
Yes, ma'am. This is related to the Gilmer Street project. There is a railroad crossing associated with Burlington North Santa Fe Railway. And anytime that we do work within the railroad right-of-way, we have to enter into a grade crossing, construction, and maintenance agreement that allows us to do the work that's necessary. And then also, we have to, as a part of that agreement, as Councilman Boyd said, there's an 80/20% cost share. And so we've entered into, this is to allow us to enter into that agreement, to allow us to do the work on the railroad right-of-way. And then also, there are certain terms that our contractor has to follow and that's a part of that agreement as well. And then anything associated with long-term operation and maintenance is a part of that agreement. As we mentioned already, it's an 80/20. The improvements associated with it, it's the railroad crossing panels will be improved, associated with the roadway as well as the sidewalk. Also, new gates associated with the roadway. So two gates on each side, as well as gates associated with the sidewalks on each side for pedestrians to make sure that we have proper controls. In addition to that, there will be connectivity associated with adjacent crossings. And all of this work, when it is completed, would actually set us up to possibly meet quad zone improvement requirements. However, there is an additional step that would be necessary in order to qualify as a quad zone through the Federal Railroad Administration that would have to be pursued. But at least we would have infrastructure in place that helps set the stage for that. This basically shows the railroad crossing. As I mentioned, there will be several gates controlling car patches, patches ways, gates for the sidewalk for pedestrians here. And the improvements will be here, basically on the two sidewalk areas, and then there. The council has two alternatives, as was noted on the slide, and we are recommending, excuse me, that the council authorize the city manager enter into the construction agreement associated with the railroad crossing for Gilmer Street.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just great. It's gonna look different in that area. I like that we're gonna have dedicated pedestrian paths across there for the first time. Just one question, a little bit off of this. Were there any needed improvements for the traffic signals at the intersection of Ransier and Gilmer and then Veterans Memorial and Gilmer?
I'm gonna let our city engineer answer that. I'm going to let our city engineer answer that.
Not in regard to the signal itself. We're looking at the approach, as Gilmer approaches it, and looking at cleaning up the turn lanes. Later on, as we work with Ransier itself, we'll be looking at the improvement of those signals as we look at that whole corridor.
Got you. Which is curious. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS 23183. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a local on-system agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the Bunny Trail Roadway Reconstruction Project.
Thank you. Mr. Rebell?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And counsel, this is a project associated with the Bunny Trail Reconstruction Project. So we're coming closer and closer to moving that project forward. As you all may be aware, we're anticipating being able to do bids early in 2024. So this is a part of that project, as you know, as some of you may know, along Stan Sluter and Bunny Trail, there is a place where flooding occurs and ponding occurs. And this project is really going to set us up, this agreement is going to set us up to allow us to do the work that's necessary to fix that, that issue. The reason for this agreement is because of the work, well, some of the work will have to take place on the Texas Department of Transportation right-of-way. And so we need to enter this agreement with them to have permission to do the work that's on their right-of-way. This agreement, and, and I do want to point out in the slide, the third word include is not needed. So it should really say this agreement does not include. I want to make sure I point that out, does not include any additional costs. Because this is covered in the overall Bunny Trail Reconstruction Project. And as I've said, this will allow us to do the work in the right, in the, in the state right-of-way, but also allow us to make sure that we can maintain it over time. As we mentioned, as you can see in the slide, that's, this is the intersection of Stan Sluter and Bunny Trail. And what we're doing is, is we're putting two inlets here, we're putting a pipe that connects those inlets. The water will drain this way, this way, this way, this way, all the way down to a ditch just in front of Starbucks on Stan Sluter. Council has the two alternatives, as noted on the slide, and we're recommending that we proceed with this agreement that allows us to do this work in the state right-of-way when we're ready to move the project forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can't help it, I'm excited about this getting closer to commencement. The drainage improvement, what part in the construction process does that take place? Is it at the beginning, the end, or?
I would assume it's beginning.
It, well, we're hoping the beginning, but really, when we get a contractor on board, it'll be up to how they schedule their project. Time of year may play a role too. If it's in the later parts, matter of, you know, typically, the sort of thing happens first. Any underground work is the first thing you do, and then you start working on surface work. You know, with Bunny Trail, we're ripping up the whole road, so.
Sure.
It's going to be a matter of how they stage it.
Thank you. That's from my knowledge, so I can communicate that should I get asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. Madam Secretary.
RS 23184. Consider a memorandum resolution to purchase Pro Care Preventative Maintenance and Parts from Stryker Cells LLC in an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers.
Good evening, sir.
City Manager. This request is to purchase the Stryker Cells, or preventive maintenance and parts from Stryker. Covers equipment such as stretchers, the loading systems for the stretchers, our LifePak 15 cardiac monitors, and the capnography equipment that goes along with that. This is an extended warranty encompassing all parts, labor, travel, maintenance, and batteries, which are usually the most expensive part of the stretcher repair. And it will bring this up, all of our equipment covered for up to three years. Because right now, we include Stryker Pro Care with each new piece of equipment we get. So this will add to 23 pieces under the current maintenance agreement. Two alternatives, you can deny the request as written or approve the purchase. Financial impact for the FY '24 being an amount not to exceed 125,000. It is a budgeted expense, so we do not need any additional funding. And staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to approve this or his designated need.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23185. Consider a memorandum resolution to authorize a letter of agreement with Rice Inspection Incorporated for construction inspection on the Chaparral Road Wastewater Improvements Project in an amount of $50,516.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, counsel, city manager, city attorney. This item is for inspection services for sewer mains that's going to be installed. One of the questions that was asked in citizen comments was about what does this project entail? It's going to be, we're going to be installing, it's a wastewater improvements project that's going to include sewer mains, forest mains, and manholes along that area too. One of the big issues that we're looking at is having that in before we go up with the EOC that's going to be built out there that was approved with Opera funding, so we can have sewer to that area, as well as expanding sewer to the entire area out there. So I just want to address that before we go into the presentation. On a little background on this item, September 26th of this year, council awarded a construction contractor, Aguero Corporation, for construction of a Chaparral Road wastewater improvement projects in the amount of $2,729,603.91. In the past, construction inspections for water and sewer capital improvements projects were handled by city inspectors, but due to staffing issues, we don't have that capability right now. So we do have to contract this out and out. So it's just part of the, the inspection for this project, for this project to be completed. Staff has negotiated a letter of agreement with Rice Inspections in an amount not to exceed $50,516 for construction inspections for this project. We have two alternatives tonight to consider, and staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager or designate to execute a letter of agreement with the Rice Inspections for construction inspections for the Chaparral Road Wastewater Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $50,516. And author of the city manager or designate to execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. And we're here to answer any questions. I have Mr. Cony here with me as well.
No questions. Madam Secretary.
RS 23186. Consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of fleet parts through Advance, Chastain, Heil, Lone Star Freightliner, NAPA, and O'Reilly, in an amount not to exceed $525,000, and tires through Southern Tire Mart in an amount not to exceed $210,000.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members and city manager. This item is for the procurement of fleet parts and tires. Fleet service maintains and repairs 976 units of fleet and requires the purchases of parts and tires. Parts are purchased from multiple vendors totaling approximately $1 million annually. The primary vendors for parts are Advance, Chastain, Heil, Lone Star Freightliner, NAPA, and O'Reilly. The primary vendor for tires is Southern Tire Mart. And for the primary vendors that you can see in this here, these were the actuals for fiscal year '23. And then the discounts, we try to use the discounts, the better discount, that's why we're trying to buy more parts. And then you can see our estimates for fiscal year '24 are over here for the parts, and this is for the tires. Now, the estimated amounts may vary, but the total overall, it will be no more than $525,000. The alternative is to disapprove of approved. And the recommendation is the city council authorize the procurement of parts through the five primary vendors, and not to exceed an amount of $125,000. And tires through Southern Tire Mart in the amount not to exceed $210,000. You have any questions? I'd be happy to answer. Thank you, Mayor.
Public hearing, the public hearing will be held on November.
Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but there is one more item.
I scratched yours off already. Sorry about that. Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. RS 23187. Consider a memorandum resolution to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Hill Country Transit District to provide for a public transportation system.
Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, the HOP, as we know it, or Hill Country Transit District, is a political subdivision of the state of Texas that operates a public transit system known as the HOP. The city does not have its own public transportation system. There are other cities and other counties involved, but Copper's Cove, Harker Heights, Colleen are into the Colleen Urbanized Zone area for federal formula funding purposes. The HOP, in addition to the money they receive from the city of Colleen and from these cities, receives significant funding from the federal government. And we approve funding for the Hill Country Transit District in the '24 adopted budget. And an interlocal agreement is needed to provide for a public transportation system to be operated and managed by the Hill Country Transit District within the Colleen UZA. Also, this is for bus service, where this is to continue the, the type of service that we've had over the past year. We'll continue it into this year. And sometime in about the May timeframe, they're going to be transitioning to the service that they told you about here a couple of months ago or so, maybe a little bit longer, to microtransit. There's still going to be some of the fixed bus routes, but there's going to be more direct transit, and it's also going to be supported by an Uber-type service as well. I think it is going to be something that, that serves our residents much better than we have with just the fixed bus routes. But that will be coming later in the year, and Hill Country Transit District will be here to explain more than they have in the past. And they will also be doing a number of public, a number of public meetings to inform their residents of how to access this service, mostly, almost everyone has a cell phone. There's other ways to do it, but there will be an app to get the ride that you need and tell you how to get where you need to go. And this is something, this interlocal agreement, something we should have been, should have been doing every year. And so we'll be doing that in the future from now on as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The public hearing will be held on November the 14th. Counsel, you have two times each to speak, five minutes. Madam Secretary, public hearing.
PH 23056. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mark Honda on behalf of 1314 Stan Schluter Loop LLC, Benito J. Hidalgo, case number Z2322, to rezone Lot 2, Block 1, out of the Plental Addition Phase 2 First Amendment Replat Number 1 from B3 Local Business District to B5 Business District, and RC1 Restaurant and Alcohol Sales District to B5 Business District. This property is locally addressed as 1314 West Stan Schluter Loop, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Mr. Rebell.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and counsel and city manager, this is a zoning request to rezone property that's currently located at 1314 West Stan Schluter Loop from its current designation of B3, B5, and RC1. And RC1 is actually an inactive zoning district now. It was the old restaurant and alcohol sales district to B5. The star shows the approximate location of the property. As you can see, it's actually just across from where Old Forum to Market Road 440 terminates. As you can see, this property has B3 as well as B5, and then a portion of the RC1. And again, the goal is to rezone all those three districts into 1B5. The applicant is asking for this request to really clean up the site, as well as to make sure that they can appropriately market it. A lot of information associated with the comp plan analysis. Won't spend a ton of time, although it is in the neighborhood infill area, and we know in those areas, that's where growth is encouraged, where it makes the most sense. And then also, it's in the regional commercial place type where retail opportunities should abound. Relationship to the comp plan implementation efforts. And of course, staff believes that this request is consistent with the comp plan analysis and recommendations. It's not in the FEMA Special Flood Hazard Area National Wetlands Inventory. This is a view of the subject property facing south. To the north. We did complete all the public notification requirements. We did receive two written responses, one in support of and one in opposition to. The gentleman who raised opposition actually lives in one of these duplexes that's behind this area. And the opposition was related to, he wanted a noise barrier to deal with, with sound and issues of that matter. I would note, I should go back to the slide, there is an existing metal fence, as well as there are, as you can see, trees, probably about eight to 10 feet in height, really providing that separation and that screening between all of the retail development and in the duplex complex. The alternatives are noted on the slide, and staff is actually recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone those three districts into the one for B5. This case was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission on October 2nd, and they unanimously vote to recommend approval, a vote of eight to zero.
There are no questions. Items for discussion at workshop. Counsel, you get two times each to speak for five minutes. Madam Secretary.
DS 23105. Colleen Economic Development Corporation update.
Good evening, sir.
See if I'm going to work this. It is, it's a pleasure to kind of, I'm Scott Connell, I'm president of the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. It's a pleasure to come and give a quarterly update. I think at our last, maybe the last scheduled time, it was really more budget. I think we might have some things that cross over the last couple of quarters of the, of the last fiscal year to give you a little bit of, of activity and, and some, some success items that we've had in the last year, the last couple of months. So it's always important on the big projects to give you an update on where things are, most particularly, the Dongjing SemiChem Texas Project, well under construction. When we started this project, they, their anticipation was to be open about this time. It's going to be into the first quarter, and just wanted to give you that update to know this construction, you always ask, make an estimate, things change a little bit. But it is moving, and that's a very new shot of the, of the site. They're moving on, you can really see all the parking lots areas, things are really coming together. They indicate that they're moving, to move some equipment in, in the next couple of weeks. And so, but, but first quarter is when they'll be operational. So we're very excited about that taking shape. As you know, they are a, a major supplier to Samsung and the manufacturer of semiconductor chips. And so we're, we're excited to be a part of that as they grow. So wanted to keep you up to date. In the last couple of months, one of the things we, we worked on was a contract with a group called Waymaker Group. We, as you know, we've been working with Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas, on a research park component that still continues to move. The original plan all along was to look at not only what would happen on the campus, but also, how do we expand technology opportunities throughout the community in terms of real estate, in terms of what are the right technologies we're looking at? Technology is, you know, pretty much from, from morning to night in terms of what it could be. Every community is a little bit different. So we completed that project with Perkins and Will and the university in our first quarter. The next opportunity for us to keep this momentum going is to look at it from where should we be marketing? What, what are the particular items we should be targeting for industry? So we hired them to do a technology ecosystem study, and, and that's to really work with and, and have interviews with a lot of folks in the community who are involved in technology, and how do we, how do we cross over some things? About that time, some opportunities came along in, in the Economic Development Administration to where they are beginning to. to where they are beginning to roll out a number of grant opportunities for communities that are focused particularly in technology and other business opportunities. So they kind of set that aside for a little bit and said, hey, we'll help you with those application processes. One was Tech Hubs, which is more of a regional scenario. It was intended to be MSA, so we're excited about that process has brought a consortium together that represents folks from Colleen, Temple, the region, higher ed, all sorts of different divisions of the community that really can benefit and put what I would say, groups that have been doing different things on their own into a conversation for us going forward. And then also, another entity for Recompete, which is the latest one. I can say we did not get a Tech Hubs designation this time, but it's something that might come up in the future, so we're staying together. And then Recompete is an opportunity for us to look at how to address, in a broader sense, workforce shortages, folks that might need to be a little help to get back into the workforce. And we focus that particularly as it relates to technology. We hope to have the ecosystem study since these two came in front. We'll have that done in the next couple of weeks or so. I've seen the first, we're working through some of the drafts of that report, and we'll look forward to be able to bring that to you all as soon as that's available, probably first of the year. But it has been very beneficial to have an outside partner with us, helping us in this processes. We would like to just make you aware, if you weren't, that we did sell a site, about a five-acre site, just under a five-acre site in the park, in the Colleen Business Park, to Bell County Class, right as an adjacent property to them. They have some expansion needs on their site, and you know, everything's a little bit of a grade there and needed a little bit more property. But as they were going through that on their own, they don't need all of the property, but it made sense to take the whole thing and partner with a group called Workspace USA, who has done a development in the Georgetown area. These are the two bottom pictures. And their intent is to really make almost like a business park within a business park. So they'll take this smaller lot and create building opportunities. And one of the things we've talked about before is we have a great shortage of buildings available for businesses to move into, especially small businesses. You don't have the time to wait a year to have something constructed. So they're going to move forward on some opportunities here. As you can see, their uniqueness on this is, in many cases, small businesses are not in a position, because of the size of what they do, to own their own properties. And so this creates an opportunity for a condo scenario, and we're excited about how this will come together on our properties. Very new idea, new in America in the way we're having to support small manufacturers, and we're excited to see that come together as it moves forward in the first quarter of next year. We still continue to work on, with some landowners, on potential growth opportunities for business parks. As we sell some sites, as we know, we've brought you a couple of times along the last year or so, we've sold a number of sites in the industrial park, and that just dwindles down your opportunities. So we need to be looking for new places for us to be able to have businesses. So we've begun that process. If you remember the budget process, we requested funding to help us in marketing, but also in engineering. And we've already taken that movement to work on some things, to look at properties that we might be out there on the horizon for us, and start laying that out and understand the overall cost to develop it. It's not just owning, it's also developing. So we're moving on those, and stay tuned. We hope to have some worked out in the next several months. We have had eight companies in our visit. We're seeing an active client activity, seeing us. We've traveled to some headquarters operations during this last month to talk to some companies who we've had ongoing conversations with. So regardless of what you see out there, there's still some activity. Interest rates are affecting some of what we're seeing, but the needs for business and being in Texas is still pretty heavy. So those continue on. We did ramp up with our staff member, new staff, Robert Watts. He's been on the road a little bit in the last several months on some trade shows. Went to Fabtech on a partnership with Encore. Encore Electric Delivery is now more really back involved. They were a big leader in the 90s on economic development. They've now taken that role again in hosting a trade show booth and bringing their communities as partners to work that. It saves us an awful lot of money and gives us greater visibility in the shows. Fabtech is a very large, very, very large manufacturing-focused, equipment-focused show in Chicago, and so it's important to be there because the opportunities are pretty broad there. We did something unique in partnering with our friends in Temple to go to what was called Live Exchange. It's an opportunity to focus and to talk to consulting firms who represent companies around the country in a way to talk, and this was focused on technology. So it's to have them talk about some of the technologies in the Temple area, which is more focused on life sciences, and for us, more on the digital technology, software, cybersecurity options. And the way they set it up was to do, the program was actually to encourage communities that had joint opportunities to come as a joint group. So we tried that, it was great, and we think it's important that we take advantage of the opportunities in both cities as we tell our story. That's a quick on everything. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Connell, your team, for everything that you do. One thing I can honestly say is that for the individuals, Councilwoman Gonzalez, Mr. Kegel, and Councilmember Board that serves on the KEDC Board with you, it's a great opportunity for the other council members and the residents to hear all the great things that KEDC Board is doing. But I want to put a pin in it and say this, the city of Colleen is on the rise. And I want you all to know, on this day and time, we are moving our city forward. And I thank you and your staff for everything you do. Councilmember Segarra.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Always, good presentation, always enjoy it. But I don't know how much you guys have to do with what's happening up there at the, what's it called, Anthem?
Anthem.
Anthem, yeah. And I didn't hear any updates on that.
Well, we stay in touch with them. A lot of it is their program. We have been, they're in a position where they're working with some, I think we've all heard about the David Buster's opportunity. Interest rates have affected their issues, but getting those first ones, they tell us, are the linchpins. It's the beginnings of the process. They couldn't tell us anything more other than that conversation is moving forward. As they said, the first one is always the big one that gets everybody, that gets the rest of the retail opportunity. Retail is what's driving it right now, and the residential would come at a much later time, probably two, three, or four years later down the road, given interest rates and all. So stay tuned. They are very active in their work, and we see, our relationship is, when you need it, let us know.
No, and that's good. And I was just wondering, because I know it's been probably, I don't know, more than six months they came and they cleared that field, and I drive by it every day, so I'm always wondering, what is going on? You know what? Why haven't they done anything else since?
Well, and that's what they tell us, that the first one is the one that starts the process, so we're excited about that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
DS 23106, discussion regarding implementation of the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, and welcome back, Mr. Revaile.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. This is really what we hope to do annually, give an update, annual update on comp plan implementation. You know, it's one thing to adopt a plan like we adopted in August of 2022, it's a whole nother thing to make sure that we're implementing. And that's what this presentation will focus on, you know, what have we done since the adoption of August 2022? As you know, this comp plan was adopted by this council just a little bit over a year ago, a year and a couple of months ago. It was adopted with heavy community engagement and input all across Colleen. And in addition to that, it was with a resounding voice of, we want to make sure that we maintain our quality of life and that we grow in an affordable and fiscally responsible way, and really challenged us as a comp plan to make sure that we're implementing based on the six big ideas, which you all are very familiar with. I think you even noticed that even the big ideas were incorporated within the budgeting process. And so we really tried to make sure that this is really something that we're walking out and not just talking out. We won't go through each big idea because we're trying to make time here. But in terms of major accomplishments, we have a dashboard. And so if any citizen wants to understand where we are currently with the implementation of the comp plan, you can go to colinetwentyforty.com. We won't do that tonight, but you can go there and you'll see everything about comp plan implementation progress. But a few cute things that we wanted to point out, we've developed a fiscal impact analysis model. Again, we talked about being fiscally responsible. We have key developments like Anthem Park, as well as Bunny Trail PUD. We did a fiscal impact analysis so that we understand short-term and long-term impacts. Both of those projects yielded positive results. In addition, we've adopted the Parkland, you have adopted the Parkland Dedication and Development Ordinance that helps to ensure the creation of new parks. We know that there's a park deficit according to the Parks Master Plan, and Councilman Board will certainly make sure that we're aware of that related to District 4. And this is a way to help make sure that we try to address that as development occurs. And so that's been a great tool for us. We've also hosted the Touchdown in Downtown on September 9th of Councilman Solomon. I believe you were there. I think Councilwoman Cobb, you were there as well. And Mayor, I believe I remember seeing you as well. But we had that event on September 9th. We hosted a number of community players and partners. We had a number of bands. We had participation within Colleen and cities surrounding Colleen, even as far as the city of Houston, all just having an opportunity for community engagement, as well as to provide more insight as we move into year two of implementation. And the last bullet we want to point out is the rollout of my permit now. So that's an online permitting system, you know? So instead of people having to come to the office and having to pay in the office for permits, they can actually submit online now. And to date, we've actually received 1,000-plus applications online, and that's since we opened this October 1st of this year. So it's working, people are using it. Again, the Touchdown Downtown event, just some of the pictures associated with what happened there, more pictures, interaction. And as I said, we also had boards up and we received information. Other major initiatives associated with Downtown specifically, five signature events for Downtown, attracted 1.2 million visitors to Downtown. The care unit that was instituted several months back by the Police Department, also the partnership with Boss Volunteers that led to many beautification projects, cleanups in the downtown area for many of the soldiers associated with Fort Covasos. We've also engaged the community in many community engagement activities, like we say, murals, crosswalks, you see that there, where, again, given an opportunity for interaction, given an opportunity to make the place better, and then maybe even bring people back and say, this is what we did, and celebrating. Additional things that we've done as a city, we've adopted the Homeless and Mental Health Strategic Plan. We also updated many of our codes associated with construction standards and neighborhood quality. We've also revived the TERS too, expanded that, the boundaries associated with that, also positioned the city for $160 million worth of investment over the next 25 years that will yield values in excess of a billion dollars as it relates to private investment, providing direct benefits to the business park, to North Colleen, and to Downtown. So we're very proud of that and what that is going to continue to yield for the city of Colleen. And then also, you'll see that we've increased Downtown occupancy from 58% to 80%. We're open for businesses, and businesses are open. And this is just a small representation of many of the businesses that have been open. I even see some business owners in the audience tonight. Again, if you are citizens, we encourage you to go to our Colleen 2040 website. That will allow you to see the dashboard and the implementation progress. And what I'd like to point out with this, and I won't go over each one because time will not allow that, but what I'd like to point out, that this represents year one work that we've done for the entire slate of recommendations. So you know, this is something that should be done over a 10-year period. And as you can see, I'll just give a point, in the general category, 18% complete of the total, and another 47% in progress. So it's been a stellar year. And then just some year-two priorities, and this is just to whet your appetite, this is not everything, because obviously, we can't predict everything, but we are focusing on making sure that we have our Unified Development Code in place. You know, we did our comp plan, we adopted that. The next logical step is Unified Development Code. We also need to make sure that we're moving forward on our new parks. We've got the master plan in place, we've got the dedication ordinance in place, we've got the COBUN project in place, so we should be able to make some forward motion on new parks across the city. We're going to continue revitalization downtown and downtown Colleen. There are more businesses coming. We also have the HAC Building that will have some information to share at some point that will be extremely positive. We also see ourselves just skipping down a little bit, being able to obtain that Main Street Program designation. As some of you may know, we did win an award from the Texas Downtown Association, economic game changer, you know? And so that's our peers, that's across the state, recognizing the city of Colleen for the tremendous efforts that has been done, under great efforts from our Downtown Revitalization Director, Kate. All right? As well as so many other partners across downtown. And so we're really proud of what's going on there. We're also going to continue our my permit now rollout. This was just phase one, but we want our entire development process to be rolled into that system. And so we're going to put more components within that system because it's working well. And I'll just let you read through the rest, but you get the point. We're ready to move into year two and continue to realize great things for the city of Colleen so that we can continue to create these kinds of moments.
Thank you, Mr. Revaile. Counselor, Mayor Proton.
Mr. Revaile, what a wonderful report. Maya Angelou says something very important. You can tell us what you're going to do. You can tell us who you are, but when you show us, that's a whole different story. You have just showed us who we are. Earlier today, I stated that our council was an excellent council, and we work together. And our staff is an excellent staff because we all work together. Maya Angelou tells us once again, you can tell us who you are. You can tell us what you're going to do, but tonight, you just showed us what we're doing. Thank you, sir.
And I'm just the voice piece. I'm just the voice piece. This is a city action.
Everyone, sir. That was for everyone. Everyone has showed us what we can do. So many times, you get beat up for things because it doesn't be on time, or it's not the way that it's supposed to come, or it didn't show up on time, or this person didn't say this to me. But tonight, your report, your numbers, it showed, and that's what matters. Sometimes, we got to take a lot, but we give a whole lot more. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, and I second that emotion for sure. I'm really excited about the dashboard. The dashboard, though, for the citizens, again, to that point, so they can see what's being done and as we're making our progress. You know, before I was even on council, I was part of that Comprehensive Planning Committee, and so all of those folks that dedicated so much of their time to putting this plan together and laying out this rollout, I know that they're watching. I hope that they are pleased with the work that we've done so far and that we've been able to accomplish. The people that, you know, the advisors of the Comprehensive Plan were very adamant that if we that if we went in with a targeted focus in three to five years, realistically, we could get things done. And you're just showing us that first year, what we have knocked out. I mean, I'm really excited about the next years to come, what we're going to be able to do. Thank you.
And we appreciate the conversations that we've had together and what you've shared with us, tangible things that we could do, and we've worked on those things. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Revell, to you and your staff, Mr. Kegel, you and your executive directors, but especially to our employees and our small business owners downtown, and Ms. Kate, you know, I think the world of you, you're an all-star. The Texas Downtown, being a city of Colleen, a Texas Downtown Award winner, that, I don't think we realize how significant that is. I mean, it's really huge. When I say the city of Colleen is on the rise, starting from all the council members that are here, I would go into battle with them any day to turn a city around, because I agree with Mayor Proton and Councilwoman Gonzalez, they just don't talk the talk, but they walk the walk through their votes. Their votes says a lot about what they think about the future of the city of Colleen, the small business owners downtown. They entrusted the city and they invested in our downtown. They play a tremendous big part in the success of Downtown Colleen, investing, the small business owners investing in Downtown Colleen. So I am, I am, I am, I mean, I cannot clap, but I'm just going to do this in the air, to you, your staffing team, the community engagement team, Mr. Crouch, what, the homeless officer that's down there, just Ms. Tiffany McNair, her team, just everyone in that area, even from our legal team, finance team, that's big. And I am so proud to say, to be the mayor of the city of Colleen, I am happy. So we're going to move on with Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what has already been said and congratulating you, Mr. Revell, and Ms. Kate. I mean, I just, we see the passion, and it shows, and I just want to congratulate you on that award and the staff doing an excellent job. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just want to say one more person we forgot, Mr. Lavalas.
Yes.
The Downtown Colleen Events. All right, Councilmember Board.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to say that I am, I'm happy to be a part of the council that has a commitment to Downtown Colleen. I grew up here, and I have not seen this level of commitment to Downtown. We have progress. We've got a county annex that's going to be built downtown, potentially a municipal building for the city of Colleen, and we've got parks invested in. You see the stuff that's going on with the painting and the events. This is impressive. When you look at this dashboard, this states that for Downtown, we're at 38 completion, 38% completion rate within Year One. So I'm just looking forward to continuing to support Downtown, and I do think District One Councilmembers do an outstanding job representing your district. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Board. I'm just so grateful and thankful. Thank you, Mr. Revell. Madam Secretary.
DS 23107, discuss the K-Tempo Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant.
Mayor and Council, there's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. All right, Madam Secretary, Councilmember requests for future agenda item.
RQ 23010, Warming Center Policy.
All right, so Council, I just want to set some guidelines. This is not a discussion item, it's just for Mayor Proton to share with you why she would like for this to be on the agenda, and you will vote yes or no for a future agenda item. Mayor Proton.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Kegel, councilmembers, constituents, it is my hope that we move this forward for a future agenda item, the Warming Center Policy. If we look at the temperature, we may need to lower the temperature. It's, the months are getting cold, some of the policies may need updating and changing. This would include the centers, looking at the centers and looking at places, and looking at when we open those centers. Thank you.
Thank you, and I co-chaired this with Mayor Proton, and my reason for wanting this to be on the agenda, between me, the Fire Chief, Peter Perez, and Mr. Kegel, we're getting phone calls all day and night, wondering why we haven't opened up the facility, and only this council can make the decision if they want to change the policy. But these are three things, I personally think that we should set aside a facility. We don't have to look, I am, will be meeting with other, or it may not be with the city, but we need to work to see what resources are needed to run it, the staffing, training, and also, we have to pay our employees overtime if we're going to go that way. So if this is a future agenda item, if you're okay with the policy the way it is, we don't have to move it forward. If you want to make changes to it, then we will need a motion of direction to move it forward for a future agenda. Mayor Proton.
Madam Mayor, I move that we move...
Motion of direction.
I motion, ma'am?
A motion of direction.
Oh, I would like to make a motion of direction to move, let me get the number.
For a future agenda item.
For a future agenda item, let me get the number, y'all. RQ 23010, Warming Center Policy towards our future agenda item for discussion.
Mayor Proton, I mean, Councilwoman Gonzalez. A second. Okay, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, motion of direction to put RQ dash 23 dash 010, Warming Center Policy on the future agenda. Motion of direction carries five to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Proton, a second by Councilmember Board, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no?
Yes.
All right. Mean adjourn.